Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. It is a little bit past 6 o'clock. So in respect to everyone's time this evening, we're gonna get moving. I want to welcome you all to the primary candidate forum for the school district of Milton. I am Dani Stavarias, the executive director of the Milton area Chamber of Commerce, and we are very proud to be able to host this forum for you tonight. I want to welcome our eight candidates with us and thank them for taking time out of their busy schedules tonight to be here for you guys in the community. The Milton area Chamber of Commerce collected questions from our membership and the community, and our business advocacy committee went through the questions and picked the top three that we felt were the right questions. We do have members of our business advocacy committee walking around tonight that we are allowing, if we have extra time, audience questions to be asked. Mike Holtz over here in the red shirt and Mike Pierce in the green sweater. If you do have a question that you would like to submit, please find them. I do want to announce that no candidate or school district employee have had access to the questions before tonight's forum. We do have refreshments over here. Please help yourself during, if you are thirsty or hungry. And at this time, I would like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Stan Stricker from WJVL, and he is going to go over the rules and begin the forum.
Now, you can tell what radio station Dani listens to because most of you probably know I'm on WCLO as well. Happy to see y'all here. I want you to know I live here, I vote here. I think it's exciting to have eight candidates, though primaries can be a bit of a hassle, but it's nice to see such a crowded room. Now, I too have not seen the questions. I did not write the questions, so don't blame me, okay? The rules are simple. We're looking for a polite debate. You can attack the issues, but please do not attack each other, all right? We're civil. We're one happy family here in the same community. You'll have two minutes for an opening question, two minutes to answer each question. You'll have a one-minute warning from Dani and then a two-minute close. And we'll start with a different person each time. So the most additional questions we possibly will have are three, because Dani's already prepared and thanks to the committee, three questions as it is. And I think it's great that the chamber puts this on because it's hard to put eight people in the same room at the same time in a venue like this, so, great. Are we ready? Anything else? All right, good. So, Gabe, you're on the left, and you were chosen completely by random.
I'm 100% sure of that.
And too, I believe, JATV is here, so not only will you get plenty of airtime in the Milton, well, throughout the Milton School District because for the folks who live in Janesville as well. All right, Gabe, two-minute opening statement, and you can talk about yourself, where you stand on the issues, whatever you want. Gabriel Zerlong.
Thank you, and good evening, and thank you to the Milton area Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. Thank you to all my friends, neighbors, and families for supporting my opportunity to run for a seat on Milton's school board. Some of you may know me already. Some of you may know me as being the little guy that my older sisters would drag around to all their events and activities around town. Others may know me from growing up with their own children. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Gabriel Zerlong. I am a lifelong resident and Eagle Scout, a recent graduate from the University of Wisconsin Whitewater with a degree in political science and public administration. I currently work for the Wisconsin State Legislature. I want to thank both the teachers in Milton and the professors of the University of Whitewater for helping me achieve my goals at this point in my life. Even though I have not been in the workforce long, I am open to new ideas of what can be done for our school district. My goal is to serve, to bring community, communications, transparency, teamwork to our district. I may not have years of experience of being on boards or committees or many years of working, but I do have years of experience in two areas. First, because I have been a lifelong resident of Milton, I understand the heart and the soul of our great school district. I have grown up with people who have soon, if not already, be stepping up to take over the roles as teachers, staff, and administrators in our district or taking over the family businesses within our community. I understand and know the concerns they have for the school district and what they want for the next generations to come. The second area is that I know firsthand, as a fairly recent Milton student, what it's like to go through the school system of Milton. I know what the learning environment is like. I understand what it is like to work within the facilities to perform sports and activities, and I am also the only person out of these eight candidates that has this experience. This election is not only about the education of facilities of Milton School District, but it is about the community that Milton School District serves. Anything that Milton School District Board does will affect someone or something within the district, and these are decisions I will not take lightly. I ask for your vote. Thank you, and may God bless Milton.
Well, minute 58 seconds. Good job, Gabe. Harvey Smith, your two-minute opening statement, please.
Okay, again, I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting this event and for inviting me to it. I've lived in the city of Milton for 25 years. I've had three children who have graduated through the Milton School District. I currently have a granddaughter who's attending Milton Middle School. I've worked with youth most of my adult life. I began by working as a counselor out at the Rock County Youth Home for children who were committed there through the judicial system. I've also been a long time involved in Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, and also Girl Scouts. Been involved in many fundraisers, whether for school or for the scouting activities. I've been a strong advocate, counselor, and mentor for youth most of my life. I care about this community, and I care about the kids who live and attend school here. And I know all of you do too. That's why you're here, listening to us tonight. But I'm sad to say, the community's faith in the school board, wow, the community's faith in the school board has eroded over the past several years. And there are many reasons for this, primarily the process that we had over the last three years, going through two different referendums and all that went into that process. When I was out collecting signatures, that was the main theme that kept coming back to me, was that people felt that the school board didn't listen to them. Well, we've been through that process. We've tried the referendum, and it's now time for more creative ideas on how to solve the problems affecting the district. I think that the board that has been serving us for the last several years has only been primarily focused on the referendum issue. And so now it's time to elect some new people to the board who have different ideas, different approaches, will listen to the community as a whole, and incorporate all of those fronts in order to come up with the best possible solutions.
Wow, it's like the Gong Show. All right, thank you. Harvey, Diamond McKenna.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here tonight. Bear with me, I'm kind of coming over a sickness here. My name is Diamond McKenna. I am a mom. I am a local business owner. I am on the board of directors for the chamber, and most importantly, I am a new face in the community. I, I'm sorry, I'll scoot up for you. And I'm here to advocate for the taxpayers, to provide an environment for our kids and our teachers to achieve the highest level of academic standards. I believe in true transparency and collaboration, not only within the board members, but also within our community of taxpayers, our educators, our students, and our community stakeholders. One of the things that drove me to run for the school board is that while hot topics are important and they engage the community, and a lot of you are here because of that, it's also those topics that go unspoken of that are truly important as well. And with that, I'm not a single-issue candidate. I really, truly believe that someone that's on the board needs to be able to see the big picture and understand the true complexity of decision-making in regards to something that might not be a hot topic can still have just as much impact across the district. Through my business experience, I've been able to gain the skills of working in collaborative environments, showing true transparency, understanding fiscal responsibility. I've experienced facility needs and space issues. And at the end of the day, I understand the difference between a true needs list and a wants list. I wake up every day and make decisions to try to positively impact my business, and I want to be able to do the same thing for the Milton School District. I believe in culture, and the culture of the Milton community is what drew my husband and I into this community a few years ago. And I believe once you're in a community, your only option is to be truly invested into it. I am moving our business here. My family is here. And I am here to truly represent the community and regain that support of the community for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Diamond. Joe, don't be afraid to get close to the mic. Your two-minute opening.
Well, good evening. Thank you. I seldom have had a trouble being heard, but let me know if you can't hear me in the back. It's a little awkward to lean, so I'm just gonna retain normal posture here. So I don't have prepared remarks, but I do have the luxury of having done this before. I ran for the board in 2012 and was unsuccessful. So my opening remarks here will probably just give you some background on me. If you don't know me, my name's Joe Martin. My family and I operate a 200-cal dairy farm west of town. This marks 101 years in the community for our family. So obviously, I'm third generation out there. We've been here, obviously, my whole life and prior to that. So I'm a 1981 graduate of Milton High School, 1985 graduate of University of Wisconsin-Madison. My degree's in egg. So background-wise, some of you know, some of you may not. I participated in 2005, '06, and '07 on what we called the design team. The school board looked at a committee to pick a long-term plan for the district. We were faced with burgeoning enrollments and had very, very serious space issues and some rather explosive growth on our hands. So 20 of us, I think maybe 18, I guess to be more accurate, dove into that problem, spent 18 months. And what I want to emphasize, what we learned in that process, is more than brick and mortar. We got presented all of the programming, all of the different facets of the district, and certainly the facilities being a portion of that. That coincided with the economy tanking in '08 and GM leaving town. We put that project on the shelf. We picked it up again in more recent times here. I also participated on the fact committee. And I'm proud to say that a different group of people with three holdovers digested the information and came up to the same conclusion. So I will tell you that I think I understand the challenges that the district faces. I've been close to the end.
You can finish the sentence.
I'm good. We'll get back to that.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Brian Quapple.
Hey, good evening. My name is Brian Quapple, and like Joe, you probably can hear me. I'm pretty allowed to. But let me know if you can't. So first, I just want to thank Mac for presenting this. And I would also like to thank the teachers of the school district because I have a daughter in the Milton School District, and I just want to say that the teachers do an excellent job. So thank you very much for the teachers out there. For those that don't know me, I've been on the board for the past year. My background, I actually am a former high school math teacher. I currently am a, I have a master's degree in software engineering, and I work as a process improvement manager as well as a quality engineer at my current employer. One reason why I'm running again is because I was also a student going through the Milton School District here. And it's a great community, and I really appreciate all the citizens of the community that are great people. And, you know, so far over the year, I've had a lot of things that I was hoping to accomplish. And of course, a year isn't a very long time to get everything that you want done accomplished. You know, first year is kind of learning curve, trying to get to know everybody and trying to get to, you know, know where people stand and everything. So the reason why I'm running again is just to, you know, continue and try to serve the community, be a servant of the community, and try to make the great school district of Milton even better.
You beat the buzzer. Brett Miller.
Well, I want to say thank you for everyone coming in tonight. First thing is, I'm a safety person. I'm gonna tell you right off the bat. The exits are on that side. That exit's blocked over there, so you might want to head out that way, okay? This is getting full in back there. Let my daughter and my wife go out first, okay? I'll take my two minutes up on that. Just a little background. My name's Brett Miller. I was born and raised in Wisconsin here in Milton. My parents were born and raised here in Milton. I graduated in 1988 here in Milton. Went to UW-Platteville, got my degree in building construction management with the emphasis in construction safety. So I have a little bit of background in there. My biggest thing right now is that I do a lot of training for our industry, the construction industry. So on that, what I want to say is that we need, as the community, to get together and come up with some type of system or plan together for expanding our students. That's the biggest thing I'm here for, is our students are number one. They have to be number one. And it's not, we're gonna go out and spend $90 million on a new high school. We gotta figure out ways to make sure our students are always gonna be put first. And right now, our board does not communicate to each other or to the community. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Brett. Shelley Krulhanki.
Hi, I'm Shelley Krulhanki.
I have two children, thanks. I have two children, one that graduated in 2013, and my daughter Carly is a junior at Milton High School this year. My husband is in the audience. He works at Play Monster in Beloit. This is my first three-year term on the board. I also have a background in my previous life. I was a aquatics manager in Janesville, so I have a 20-year history in aquatics. I look at what we're looking for. The reason I'm rerunning and want to be re-elected is I want to continue the work that I've been involved in with the district in the past three years, making the right decision for our students. I keep hearing about all the interest groups and all the different things and the different agendas people have, but when it comes down to it, it's about our students. Currently, I'm on the strategic planning committee, and we've looked at the district-wide strategic plan, which our number-one goal has been to hire and retain qualified staff, keeping staff morale up, providing materials and tools needed to do their jobs. We're very involved in the new DPI-required K-12 academic career plan, and I'd like to see that continue and follow through. This year, seniors will be doing their first portfolios presented. We're in the, I'm also on the curriculum and co-curricular activities committee. We've just approved our new science program, which is the next-gen standards that will be going through, a reading and writing curriculum. I'm also on the policy committee, which the old committee has just finished updating all the policies, and I'm on the technology committee. There are so many great things here in Milton happening, and I want to keep working with the board and the community and the students because, as Brett said, the students come first. We can talk all day about all these other people that are involved, but when it comes to it, it's what we're doing right for our students.
All right, Tony, you won't get to be last every time, but you have two minutes.
Okay. I'm Tony Aston. I grew up in Milton, went to Milton Schools, graduated from here, and then got my undergraduate over at UW-Whitewater, and then was, had the opportunity to come back to Milton and start and work at the Bank of Milton. I'm currently vice president there. And I'm also in a great position where I have a wonderful wife, and I have three children. A couple, two of them are in second grade here at Milton East, and my oldest son is at fifth grade at the Northside. So I get to see, from the parent's point of view, I've gotten to kind of learn into how it feels and what goes on from where the parent sits. I also am lucky enough to go ahead and have an opportunity that my wife teaches kindergarten in the Janesville School District. So I kind of get a little bit of a background as far as how other school districts do things and what the teacher perceptions is, or teachers' perceptions are, pardon me. I think the thing that made me go ahead and decide that I really wanted to run for school board is when I continued to hear displeasure as far as with the options and choices that were presented. And I really felt like if I didn't go ahead and, you know, throw my hat in the ring, that I really wasn't doing everything I could do to make sure that I was, you know, being the best husband and father that I could be to get the best education for my children and all of my neighbors and friends' children.
All right, thank you, Tony. This will be a round robin start, so Harvey, the first question's gonna be yours, all right? Don't worry, you'll get to, you might even get to go last sometime. So the first question, and I'll repeat it for anybody who needs it, repeat it. What do you consider to be the top three strengths of the school district of Milton and the three areas most in need of improvement? The three strengths and the three areas of improvement.
The three strengths, I would say the top strength is the teachers that we have here in Milton. I think by the report cards that have been brought forward by the board at some of the recent meetings indicate that our students are doing very well, and this reflects right back to the students themselves. I think the second strength that we have is the community itself. The community, despite all of the, kind of the talk and previous rank or maybe over the referendums, I think in general, the community supports the education system here. And I think they're willing to do whatever they can do to help strengthen the system. And our parents are another important part of that. I think parents' involvement in the school system is critical to the success of the students. And I think that, I know when I was, when my kids were going to school here, I was always highly involved through the conferences and through discussions with teachers as to what was going on with my kids in particular. And I think that's critical in order to do that. As far as the things that need to be worked on, obviously, we have some structure, some facility issues that need to be worked on. Despite the fact that the education is strong here, I think we can always do more. We can always do better. We should always be looking at that. I think the implementation of the STEM program is very important here, and especially to try to convince girls to be more involved in those programs. There aren't a lot of girls who end up going into science and mathematics, and I think there are a lot of people who have talent in that area that could be convinced to do that. So I think those are continuing areas to work on. And also, I'd like to see more, I guess, partnerships in the community between the school system itself and other partners in the community that could further the educational process.
All right, thank you. Harvey, Diamond McKenna. Three strengths of the school district and three areas most in need of improvement.
I think one of the district's really good strengths is our ability to prepare our students for career and college readiness. Milton does a great job in offering programs both for students wanting to enter into careers right outside of school, like the youth apprenticeship program and also Co-op, but also the amount of relationships that we have with, like, Black Hawk Tech or local tech schools, allowing students to get credits to transfer on. So I definitely think that's one of our strengths. I think we have community, as Harvey said, as one of our core values, and we push that by having the Silver Cord Program. And I think community involvement's very important, and if anything, I think we could continue that into education in lower grades. The third area of strength I would agree with is our staff. And with that, today I got to see a video that was put out via social media about why students have their favorite teachers and what makes them enjoy coming to school every day. And I think to even just hear that from the students, whether test scores show it or not, which our district always shows strong, the students also believe that. And I think when you have the buy-in from your students, that shows valiums for how great our teachers are doing. When it comes to weakness, I would say that safety is probably a concern, and that comes from both the infrastructure, but even just building accessibility. There's doors that are left open and things like that that I think need to be addressed. And as a parent, almost dropping my student off, I want to make sure when I drop my child off, I'm not worrying about someone entering in a door that they shouldn't be allowed into. I think another issue that we can improve upon is our community support right now. I think the community as a whole supports the district, but the students also get to hear kind of the frustration that's happening. And I think we need to make sure that we improve that community image that we're providing to our students. At the end of the day, we're leaders, and the students look to us. And if we can't come together and create a positive solution for our students, who is supposed to show them that responsibility? Thank you.
Yeah, you'll probably notice when I start to lean forward, it's getting nearer to the time. That'll be your cue, just to keep Dani off the bell. Joe Martin, your two minutes.
Okay, so the three strengths, if you indulge me here, a bit of a metaphor I came up with is I think an outstanding school system can be represented by a three-legged stool. So the three legs on that stool would be the parents and the kids, and that's a very much of a strength in this community. We have an incredible parent group that supports our kids and that gives the school the additional support, both in time, talent, and money, et cetera, to complement what we're delivering from the teachers and the staff. The second leg of that stool, again, a big strength of our district, is the teachers and the staff that we've got employed here. We have the luxury of having a very engaged, very passionate group of people that we ask to deliver the educational product that our students experience. The third leg of that stool is facilities, infrastructure, whatever you want to call it. And I'm gonna characterize that as a weakness. For all the reasons that have been, people have digested in the paper, et cetera, we've got an aging infrastructure. Most of you all know that. So continuing to deal with that and address it is certainly a high priority for us. A second challenge presented by that aging infrastructure is how do we continue to deliver the top-quality education that we want with too many bodies and too small a space? So I would consider that the second weakness. A third weakness that I would highlight might be the fact that the community has not become one, if you will, behind what's best for the kids. And I think that's a paradigm that the board could get behind and get support for. And we've all got a little different idea on what that is, but if we keep that in mind, we will find a solution that delivers the seat for that three-legged stool.
Thank you, Joe. Brian Quapple.
I'm gonna do something a little different. I'm gonna give you the three weaknesses first because I always like to finish up with something positive. To me, it's gonna, by the time we get down to Tony, he's gonna be like, man, he took my answers. Kind of feeling like that now, but I agree that one of the weaknesses we have is in the facilities area. Specifically, to me, the weakness is really not having a proper facility maintenance and preventative maintenance type of system and organization. That's one reason why we're in the situation we're in now because we just haven't kept up with the maintenance that's needed. I also think another weakness is there is some bullying going on, and it is getting a little bit more prevalent from, at least from my perspective. I hear a lot more bullying going on within our schools. And I think that's something that definitely needs to be addressed and looked at. And the last one, weakness, and I'll just, you know, one of the things that I, sometimes I'm too honest, but I really think our board is a weakness, and me being part of the board, you know, I'll accept that. I really don't think the board has provided leadership, and myself included, and really hasn't looked at all the options, what's best for the kids, and listened to the community as well. As far as the strengths, I'll just repeat, I think the teachers are fabulous. I think they're a strength of the school district, and I think we have excellent parents groups. Every time I see, you know, donations from the parents groups through fundraiser, I'm just blown away at how much hard work they do. So that is definitely a strength, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, hey, Consolidated, that is one heck of a strength. I mean, they were rated number one in the state, so congratulations to them.
All right, Brett. Three strengths and three areas need for improvement, and you better work safety.
Yeah, I'm gonna be like Brian. I'm gonna start on our weaknesses that I see in our community. First one is our board. Our board is not communicating each other. We need to get a board that actually kind of meshes together. We're not gonna agree on everything. We gotta be able to disagree on things, but also work through it. If our board decides that, hey, majority votes, majority is for yes, whatever it is, or no, everyone's gotta get on board for it, okay? The other one is our facilities. Everybody's talking about the facilities. I understand, as a safety person, in the last couple of weeks, I've been going to the schools. The middle school, I cannot believe the middle school is actually operating. There is so, it just irks me that I go to a school and there's 26 kids in a closet, a storage closet for a classroom, 60 kids for a choir classroom. That's in, I think it's the old locker room. When I was there, it was a locker room. That's bad. The other one is our community. We gotta get that community together on the bad side of it. The good, I'm gonna tell you right off the bat, it's the students. The students are the best thing that we have here in our community. They go out and they get involved in our community. It could be in youth football, youth sports, whatever it is, but they're involved in our community. The other one, they already talked about, everybody's talked about, is the teachers. Outstanding teachers in this community, outstanding teachers all the way from pre-K4 all the way up to the high school. And then the other one that's a real advantage here is our classes that we offer through our district. The classes, what we have, the STEM classes, the engineering classes, the math classes, what we offer to our students. On top of that, the programs, outside programs. I just found out there's a club for Harry Potter, the Harry Potter Club in the high school. I'm like, wow, that's amazing. I wish they had that. I wish they had that when I was there. Might've read books.
Thank you, Brian. Shelly Kolehaki.
All right, the top three strengths I feel are their families and our businesses that support our schools. Between the PTOs, the booster clubs, the volunteers, in May you'll see the amount of, unbelievable amount of scholarships that are awarded to our students from businesses and community connections and our connection with the Blackhawk Technical College, which is right down the road from the high school, which a lot of our students are able to take advantage of. Obviously, the teachers and staff are one of our big strengths, but that includes the custodians, the aides, the bus drivers, the food service prep people, the people that talk with our kids every single day and are in contact with our kids every single day. And our another, another strength I feel is our academic achievements of our students, whether it be through the Blackhawk Tech program, taking CNA nursing, our AP scholars, any of the different things, the STAR students that they have at Northside, all the different things they have at the different levels for all the different kids and the way our student, or our schools recognize those kids. Our weaknesses would be our student needs, smaller class sizes, modern learning spaces and facilities that equal others in our conference, curriculum material and skills that need to be for our workforce for the next 20 years, which is involved with the facilities. Space, space is not going away, that's one of our biggest weaknesses. We talk about class sizes, sizes over 31, 32, and we're trying to address that by adding more staff and keeping Milton competitive with schools in our conference. Oregon, Elkhorn, Wanakee, DeForest have all passed referendums in the past several years, including Fort Atkinson. We're looking at our weakness of our gym, our pool, our tracks, our tennis courts, our stem wing and our tech ed areas. And those are all areas that need to be addressed sooner than later, so we can be competitive within our district.
Tony, three strengths, three areas of improvement.
Okay, well, it seems like it's a very common theme we've got going, so maybe parking lots, what else we got that we can go with, but no, I, I really tend to agree with most of the consensus that's been said. I think that some of the biggest strengths that the Milton School District has is the employees all, all the way through. I, I strongly believe in the employees in the Milton School District. I think that as a whole, they do a wonderful job and, you know, that goes top down all the way through. I, I really view community as one of the strongest strengths that, that the Milton area has in the Milton School District. I've gotten an opportunity to be involved in many different things that touch the school district, whether it's through my, my time involvement with the Chamber or whether it's through the Bank of Milton and then going up and volunteering up at the high school. And, and I, and I see that there's hundreds of other people that are doing more than what I do and, and it's just amazing to have so many people involved in wanting to help these schools and these kids. And, and then it comes back down to it against students. I think that we have a great set of students and I, I like to believe that comes from having a great set of parents that had them up there. Weaknesses, I think as far as that, that side of it goes, I think we've all discussed that there's some facility weaknesses that is, that are apparent and need to be dealt with in some manner. I think that there's also a weakness as far as more if it's community involved, but as far as the idea sharing, I've heard a lot of different things that this is bad or that they don't like this, but I'm not hearing as much from the community what the answer that they like to see. I mean, I'm hearing, I don't like this, not I like something. So I think that's one where hopefully that, that's something that I can help out with and be able, a new ear to listen to, or somebody has these ideas and they can feel comfortable to approach. And then the other thing is I think that there's just, this misinformation continues to spread and it's hard to, how, it's hard to deal with and how, how do you talk, when people hear things that aren't true, I guess it's, it's very hard to have a conversation room about it.
All right, thank you, Tony. Gabe, I hope you took notes, being the last one, you should have the best answer of all, no pressure at all, three strengths, three areas of improvement.
I appreciate that. I would say the first strength is gonna be parents. Every single one of us in this room, as well as anybody who's following on TV, starts with our parents. They bring us into this world and they teach us from day one what is right and what is wrong, as well as how to go about handling ourselves, as well as, community is our second one, because without the parents, there is no community around us. They have friends, they have family and that community is able to grow. I know for me, I was definitely very br, excuse me, very blessed in the sense of having three older sisters, so I have plenty of community, whether that be their friends, my family and the teachers and stuff that brought up with them that they knew I was coming up through the grade levels and knew kind of my strengths and weaknesses before I even got there. The last one for our strengths is gonna be teachers. Again, going back on my last point, these teachers come to Milton and they stay. They stay until the day they retire, so many of them are there and even when the student leaves, they're able to come back and still use those teachers as a resource to learn more. For me, for an example, I struggled in some areas, I was able to come back to Milton and come to my actual teachers and say, you know, what was I struggling in in your class? How can I improve that in my college academic career so that I can improve the future down the road? I have two weaknesses. Number one is vocations. We don't talk about vocations enough and what the student wants to do after high school, whether that be serve our beautiful country, whether that be going to Cowards, two-year a tech school, the trades, whatever they want to do. We gotta talk about that more and we gotta get them on an actual plan. The last one is simply faith. We've lost faith in two things. Number one, this country is one nation under God, so we've lost faith in bringing that into the actual school district. I was the only one growing up that brought God into the conversation with any one of my friends, and my friends always wanted to know what that was like. The second part of faith is that we've lost faith in our school board and our school district, in the simple, in the simple fact that we need to rely on them to make, making sure that they are making the right decisions for the next generation and having faith that they are hiring the right administrators and teachers, as well as doing the right thing for our school district.
All right, that's question one. Okay, we'll try to keep it to fewer than seven more. All right, Diamond McKenna, we'll start with you. Many people believe that these schools are the center of the community. What does this statement mean to you and how would it affect your decision as a board member?
I agree, I agree. The schools are the center of our community. It's, it's our children, it's, it's also our future. These kids come to school every day and they're here to learn. They're, they're learning more than what a textbook can teach them. They're learning about community themselves, they're learning about responsibility, they're learning about teamwork, and all of those skills are things that they are gonna take into the community later on in life and give back. And in terms of being a school board member, that's, that's our job. That's what we're here invested to do. Our job is to make sure that our kids are the center of our community and that we're doing everything we can every single day to provide them the resources and, and the tools that they need to move on and be successful and be satisfying in their next stage of life. And that starts with a cohesive board, one that backs the decisions that they make as an entirety. It starts with a community that can communicate with the board and have a collaborative decision on how to put forth the best feat for our students. It's, it's a commu, the school is centered and everyone else needs to, to be focused on that. And it is important to me, my son's gonna be going through this school and he is part of this bright future that Milton has to offer. And community starts at the school, but it also flourishes the rest of us, so I think it's important to look at it that way.
All right, thank you, Diamond. Joe, many people believe that these schools are the center of the community. What does this statement mean to you and how would it affect your decision as a school board member?
Okay, I would agree with the statement. If we throw the caveat in there that it's the center of a community like this or similar to this, if you extrapolate it out to a bigger community, let's pick Madison, Eau Claire, La Crosse, et cetera, it gets diluted out to the standpoint that I don't think that the schools there have the exact same impact that they do here. So, and backing up then, they are the center of this community, probably the largest employer in town and for, for certainly for lifelong residents, it's, it's a, it's a part of the community that has touched everybody, so we all have that as a common experience. It certainly is one of the top of list items that folks consider looking at this community. If they're gonna potentially come here for a job or residence type thing, I know firsthand, the, the first thing that they ask is what are your schools like? So we have to be mindful of that. As a potential board member, I would have that as the basis for all the decisions, because we have the luxury here of having schools held in high regard. And I think I could make that statement for the previous two or three generations, maybe longer. We, we cannot take that lightly, we need to keep that as our focus, understand all the little pieces that, that add to that, that, of what gives the school that reputation. We've enumerated lots of those and we talked about the strengths. So we have to fall back on, on those strengths while we try to address the weaknesses and realize that the, the image, the performance of this school is, is tied tightly with the community and will be going forward.
All right, Brian Quapple.
Well, to me, what that means as far as a school being the center of the community, you know, our community, like every other community, is made up of parents. I think the greatest thing I have is, is my daughter. Wife's close second, but don't tell her. And as parents, what we do is we send our children to the schools for, you know, seven hours, eight hours, could be longer if there's extra, extracurricular activities. And we really rely on the schools to make sure that our most precious thing that we have, our family, is safe, is taken care of, and then gets a proper education so that they could succeed in life. And so to me, that's why schools are the center of community is because we rely on them so much to, to really nurture our children, which is the most important thing in a parent's life.
Thank you, Brian Brent. Many people believe that these schools are the center of the community. What does this statement mean to you and how would it affect your decisions as a board member?
First off, I'd like to know who does not think that the school is the center of community here in Milton. I get to travel throughout the state on the construction side, I get to see new buildings being put up, existing buildings being put up. I work in the high schools with the construction career academy system through our association and I get to talk to the teachers in, in the schools and they tell me, hey, how does Milton work? Why is Milton such on a high podium up there, really high? Why are they got the, the kids, the teachers? And it's the community, the community actually gets back into our schools here. Me personally, I'm gonna tell you, if you don't believe in our school district, you don't need to be here, sorry to say it. Support it. Go to the events, support whatever you can do, get involved in our school district, get involved with our programs, go see the, the show choir, you know, get involved, be active in our community, be active in the school district. I, I hear this from a lot of people and I see them at establishments and things, they're upset. Everybody's upset about their communities, back and forth, what's going on with it, but our school district is the center of our community. I've had the opportunity to leave this community and many times for other jobs, I'm not gonna leave. I believe in our school district, I believe in our community and we need to get the people to understand that, that are here, the school district is the number one thing that we have in our community. Like Joe said, there's the highest employer here in our community is the school district.
Shelly Kolehaki.
Okay, I agree also the schools are the center of our community and as Joe said, especially in us, a community of this size. It's a small community, but it's a big school. We are one of the top numbered schools in Rock County. I think we're fourth in the county for the size of our schools, so we are a division one school with the same as, I think it goes, Janesville, Craig, Beloit Memorial, and then us for size-wise. So we are a big school in a, in a local community. Kids spend more time at school than even at home on some days. If you look at from the time they come to school till when they leave on the bus and get home, or if they're at practices or play, practice or whatever after school, they often spend more time at school. They may eat breakfast and lunch at school. We are the number one employee, employer in the community with over 600 employees. We're also the number one economic driving force in the community. Businesses come here because of schools, families move here because of the schools. We're identified by our schools. If you go to another area in the county or the state and you'll say, oh, my kids go to Milton, well, how about that show choir, how about that sports team, how about those teacher, that technology thing you have going on? We are identified by that. The reputation of our school is the reputation of our citizens. The pride in our school is also the pride in our community and vice versa. Many of our events besides academic events are held at our schools, so people identify going there for 4H and for other meetings and Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, driver's ads, special events that are being held. We had kids come into the show choir last week, wanted to know if we had that bread we had last year. They were from another school district and all they remembered was our snack shop and the bread we had. And I'm like, I don't know, I just felt I'm new to this thing, I don't know where the bread is. But they identified that and knew that they were comfortable in our schools from coming from 22 other schools that day and felt like they were at home when they came to our school. Board makes decisions that affect not only the school, but the entire community. So as a board member, if I'm making a decision for our school, I'm also making a decision that's gonna be for our community.
All right, Tony, do you need the question again?
No, I think it's- All right. If I can turn the mic on, I'll be all right. I couldn't agree more. I think especially in our situation where we look at is the center, I think you look at it figuratively, it's, it's, it is the center, but literally it really tends to be the center of a community from, from Milton's standpoint, draws so many huge numbers of people into the, the schools and just that hours that, that school is constantly being used. If you look at any of the schools, they're always in use. I think the big thing as far as when we go through that process and, and look at where, why it's the center and how to keep it the center, is we need to make sure that Milton School District stays a great school district and keeps being a, a school district of choice. It's, you know, when we have people that locate into places outside of the city, but they're, they're looking to make sure it's still Milton School District and, and I'd hate to think if it changes sometime down the road where that's not the case anymore. I think the, a big thing that really when it comes down to it, why, when you look at it a global picture, why the schools are the center of this, uh, community, is it comes down to is if you don't have a strong educational system and you don't have students having opportunities because of that education, I think the community continues to deteriorate very quickly. Thanks.
Gabe.
I would agree with the statement. Schools definitely bring the community together, not only for the students and educational values, but it brings the parents together and it gives the students an opportunity not only to learn through the educations and the basic educational needs as you grow up, but it gives them opportunity to get to know other students' parents and what they do for a living, to be able to ask, you know, that parent that's the engineer or that parent that's the doctor or the lawyer or the parents who's, you know, the plumber, to give them the opportunity not only to learn the basic educations, but to figure out what they want to do in life after they've graduated. Do they want to go to that tech school? Do they wanna go to that four-year college? Do they wanna go on and go and serve in our military? It gives them the opportunity to come together. It also gives us the opportunity to come together for sporting events, to be able to cheer our teams on, to give the students the opportunity to shine, to be able to have the fire department, the police department escort them into town when they win that state event or they go to that sectional meets or whatever the case may be. It gives the students the opportunity to shine as well as to spread their wings and expand and what they want to figure out they want to do after they graduate.
Thank you, Gabe. Harvey, you get the last word.
All right, I second everything. I agree that the schools are considered the center of the community. It's not only, it's the largest employer to start with. It's also true for the students themselves, because the school is where they spend the majority of their day, talking with their friends, talking with teachers, participating after school oftentimes, whether it's sports or music programs or whatever. It also is the center because it brings parents into the, into the group in terms of, again, through teacher conferences where you're communicating with your students' teachers, where they're attending events that their students are involved in. It brings people who don't have children into the, into the center also. We have people that don't have kids anymore in the school system that still come to the sporting events, or they'll come to the, to the play or the show choir event. It also brings people from outside the community and in terms of, of whether it's show choir competitions or band competitions or athletic events. So you have also people coming into our community and our school system from outside. It's also a way that we're hoping to keep students here to lend their talents to the community once they've graduated from the school system. And from the backgrounds of most of the people here, a lot of them have been lifelong Milton residents, so they did need to stay here. And I think it's important to keep the, the abilities that we have from our students to be able to keep it here if, if at all possible. It's a great place for people to get together and socialize and meet and talk and, and just, and just be part of a community. And as a board member, I think the goal of the board should be to, to reconcile the importance of that issue that the, the school is the center of the community, along with also being mindful that there are other parts of the community that need to be pulled into that center, that maybe not, that, that either don't feel welcome for whatever reason or, because they don't have students in the school system, they need to be brought into that center as well.
All right, thank you, Harvey. To the next question, Joe Martin, you'll be the first to answer. And you'll notice just how long a break it is if you're first, because you have to wait till you're the next time. How will you inspire trust and positive working relationships between the board, the community and the school- community, and the school district personnel?
And I got to be first on this one?
You got to be first. How will you inspire trust in a positive working relationship?
So I think, I think trust is, it's, one of the 4H models, which is a product of that program, is learn by doing, lead by example. And I would try to do that as much as possible. I take issue with the fact that folks want to say that trust is an issue. I've been very close to the board for 10 years through this strategic planning and long-range planning process. I think the board has done its job communicating with the community. Just because you don't like the message doesn't mean that they didn't communicate. And you have to remember that communication's a two-way street. Information gets delivered and information has to be received. So trust, to me, trusting someone is believing they're doing the right thing when you're not looking. And I think by and large, if we look at this district and the board, a report card, if you will, I mean, we have low taxes, arguably too low. We have outstanding performance across all metrics, whether it's staff, students, whatever. So the board has done a good job. I would hope to continue that. I would try to lead that effort and be very, very visible and transparent and inspire trust by doing the right things.
All right, Brian, how would you inspire trust in positive working relationships between the board, the community, and the school district personnel?
Yeah, I guess I have to disagree with Joe because I do think that there is quite significant degree of distrust within the community as far as trusting the board. You know, I think the most important thing to inspire trust is to be very transparent. You tell it like it is. You tell everything like it is, and you make sure you get your facts straight before you say something. I also think that it's very, very important to listen to your constituents, listen to the community members. That obviously hasn't happened until recently after two failed referendums. So they have to listen not just to one group of citizens or one special interest group, as I like to call it. They have to listen to everybody in the community. And the last thing I think that is extremely important is, you know, you will hear people kind of say, well, this person on the board has, you know, has conflict of interest because of this and this, or that that board member, you know, they have an ulterior motive because of this. You know, it may not be true, but in order to instill trust, you have to even, you have to make sure that there isn't even an appearance of a conflict of interest. It may, you may not have a conflict of interest, but you certainly should not even give the appearance of a conflict of interest. So that's how I would propose to inspire trust. Transparency, listen to people, and no conflict of interest.
All right, Brent Miller, how would you inspire trust in positive working relationships?
Well, the first thing is the communication. We've got to figure out a way that our board communicate, can communicate to each other, and then move it into our community. And then get the community to buy into what the board is saying. Open it up. Open up our board meetings. Have more listening programs going on. Have meetings with our community and say, this is why we're looking at doing something like this. Have an open line of communication is the big thing. That's one thing that I'm seeing right now is the open line of communication is not there. We do have the open comment period during the board meetings. Somebody comes up and does a three-minute spiel, but the board doesn't communicate back, you know? There's state statute issues and got to get involved with that. But again, it's also, now, if somebody has a question, how do they get that answered? Does the board come back to them later and answer that question? Who knows what's going on? That's the other issue is that it's not open. We need to be open more with the board, needs to be open with the community, the community needs to be open with our board, and have that open door policy. That's one of the big issues that I see right now is there's really not an open door policy. You got some people on the right, you got some people on the left. They don't, you know, get together too well, let's put it that way. We got to figure out a way to communicate to each other if we got a different opinions, whatever it's going to be, but we got to come together and say, all right, we disagree on this, let's disagree on this, but somehow work through it, okay? The trust is a big issue, and we need to work on that.
Shelley.
Okay, I feel that voters put the trust in the board and trusted that we are educated professionals, that we're elected to do our job. We have done our job. We are working to do our job. We are communicating to do our job. Every meeting we have had that I have been on in three years has been an open meeting besides the ones that are required to be closed by law. We have been, had everything we could possibly have on the website and handouts and in paper form if you want them. If you're not a website person, which I know a majority of people maybe don't have access to internet all the time, I am a paper person. I would want a paper copy. You can request it and get that. I feel that we have hired the best staff and superintendent and personnel that we could possibly have in our district when I compare it to other districts. And when we went to the state school board convention, I hear what's going on in other districts. We are very fortunate to have the staff, the administrator, and all of the people that work in our district inside and outside the buildings to work for our district. And we should be proud of that. We cannot be, like I said, any more transparent, I think, than we have been. We have given every single resource open. We have the availability to Tim Scheiger to talk to. Any board member gives the information they need. And if we can't find the answer, we'll find, we'll get somebody that can answer it for you. In the three years I've been on the board, I've had one phone call and a handful of emails from citizens from the community. So like, I don't know who just said, it's got to be a two-way street. I feel that I am trustworthy. So people that don't know me who have said things about me, it's, you know, it's hard to do your job when you're talking to people and hearing things that are being said in the community when I've never met these people. I would love to meet people and talk to them at the board meetings. I appreciate the people and the number of people we have attending our board meetings. In my district where I teach, we usually have four people, the administrators and one union person there. So, thank you.
All right, Tony Aston, how would you inspire trust in a positive working relationship?
All right. Hopefully, it could just stand up there and be a beacon, and everybody would trust. But I think what really is going to have to happen, and as we go through, I think everybody that goes into this wants to be trusted, and I think it's important that we work towards that. Personally, I value honesty, integrity, and fairness. Some of the most important things that I deal with, both personally and professionally. And it's been a part of my life, my entire life, and I really would expect that to continue in this role. I do have to agree with Shelley, and as we kind of spoke, I feel like the board has been very open. I feel like that, you know, when I go to the meetings, or when I watch videos, or I pull up the website, it's all there. It's just a matter of how is the communication happening? I think the information is getting out, but I don't think that people are necessarily hearing the information or communicating their ideas back to the board. And hopefully, that's something that I would be able to, just to different face somebody else that's up there that's different, would be, I'd be more approachable to others. And not that anybody hasn't done a good job previously, it's just that it's someone new, and maybe that's what it would take to go ahead and bring that trust back.
Gabe Zurland.
I would say communication is the key, not only with the community, since obviously the board is elected officials, and we are responsible for reporting to the electorate, but communication between the school board and the school district. And I'm not talking about just a simple memo. I can read papers all day long, and I can look at it, and everything can sound great on paper. I'm talking about physically going to the actual schools. Now, I have been spending the last couple of weeks of visiting the schools and touring them, some of them that I've went through, and some things have not changed, but other things have changed dramatically. I'm talking about going into those classrooms and communicating with those teachers and saying, hey, what do you need academically? What do you need for the facility needs? And if you don't have that communication with the teachers, then you're not going to be able to report back to the electorate and tell them what's truly going on. Everybody can read in the newspaper about what's going on in the events on the weekend, what's going on, who's winning in sports, who's being successful, so on and so forth. But if you don't have that communication between the teachers and the board, and physically going down there and seeing what they need to be able to create that relationship, then you're not going to be able to report back to the electorate and do your job well.
All right, Harvey.
All right. I think the way to instill trust, we've been hearing, kind of going around the issue a lot, and it comes, the whole issue is communication, but a big part of that communication is listening. And a couple of people touched on it, whether you want to go back in terms of the referendum process, whether you've attended school board meetings and have asked questions, or had comments to make at the public portion of that. The whole idea is to listen. And I think what, at least what I heard when I went out and gathered signatures, was people kept telling me time and again, I don't think the board listens. If I stand up at the board meeting and make a public comment like somebody else said, the board doesn't comment back to you. I may never hear back on any of the issues that I raised during it. So I also see people kind of looking at their notes and scribbling. So you get the feeling that you're not really paying attention to you. And I think that came out with the community itself in terms of feeling that, hey, we sent letters into the editor of the paper, we attended school board meetings, we attended open sessions, and we made our views known, and they still didn't listen to us. So I think where it all starts is to listen. Just because we're elected to a position, whether it's a school board, or city council, or state legislature, whatever it is, you're supposed to be a representative. You're not supposed to be the expert and have all the answers, and you make all the decisions because you've been elected now. You're still a representative, and you still need to listen to the people that you serve.
I'm going to save the question one last time, Diamond. I realize you're the last one, but I want to make sure everybody knows what we've been talking about. How will you inspire trust in positive working relationships between the board, the community, and the school district personnel?
I think that is where I'm unique, sitting on this board. I do have the ability to bring a fresh perspective and a different perspective. I am not tied to past fact groups or original strategic building plans. I am new. I have followed it since I've been in the community, but I didn't align with anybody. So I'm kind of here raising that white flag, saying, I have knocked on doors, I have talked to community members, and they all do say the same thing. It's not even as much as that we're not listening. People have listened. People have talked, and people have listened to it, but we're not hearing it, and we're not validating. And I think as a board member, you have to recognize that. But as a community, you have to recognize the fact that someone's saying, I hear you now, and I am listening, and I want to be that change. And as taxpayers, we have to say, you know what? Maybe the process didn't start off on the right foot, and maybe not all the right people were included. But we're here now saying, let's drop the defenses. Let's admit that there's fault probably on both sides. We can't just say we're not happy. We have to present a solution. And the board has to be here to accept that solution. And at the end of the day, we're all here to provide the same thing, a good environment for our staff and our students. And it's making sure that the information does get out the right way. And if someone doesn't understand it, we find a different way to give it to the community. And if you still don't understand it, ask for another way to get that information. It's re-bringing the community back together. It's creating an inclusive environment and understanding that someone is here, someone with a new face, is ready to say, you know what? I understand what you're going through, and I want to make that difference for you.
I got to tell you, I think things are going pretty well. Don't you? Are you pretty pleased with the fact you've got eight quality candidates to choose from? And the fact you're here will make your decision a little easier than if you just heard it from your friends? Now, we're going to change it up a bit. Those were the questions prepared by the chamber. A lot of folks from the audience had questions as well. Now, our good friend, Mike Holtz, tried to collate some of those questions, and we're going to ask as many as we can get to. But we're going to limit the time now to one minute per answer so we can see how many we get to. All right? We're going to start with Brian Quapple. Being on the school board requires a commitment to the community that may require missing time at work. Are you willing to make that commitment?
This is going to be an easy one-minute question, so yes, and I have.
You don't have to take the whole minute.
I probably won't. Yes, and I have. Obviously, like anybody else with a day job, you know, you get so many days of vacation and whatnot, so the answer is absolutely within, you know, my ability to keep my job.
All right, Brent Miller, are you willing to miss time at work to do your duty on the school board?
Yeah, I'm willing to miss work. I'm involved in a lot of other activities throughout the community in youth football, youth baseball, youth soccer, softball, things like that, as much as possible. And I do miss a lot of work being involved in that. I have an awesome boss who says, get involved in the community. He was a mayor for a city. He was on a school board. He understands what I'm trying to go through right now. And he told me right off the bat, if you need to miss work because of something with the school board, miss the work. For me, I'm lucky, I have three other people that work for me on the safety side of it, so I can actually delegate a little bit of their time, and they have no problem with me doing it. So yes, I am willing to miss work to do what needs to be done to get the school board back in the shape.
All right, thank you, Brent. I'm sure this person was talking about making attendance more of a priority in your life rather than just missing work, considering how eager you are. Shelley Kroll-Henke.
Yes, I am allowed a three-person days out of my days at Lloyd Turner. And for the last few years, I've taken those personal days to attend the state school convention. I've arranged with personal time to do the serving of breakfast of the staff. I've attended award ceremonies, and it's not only work time, it's family time. This is a priority to me, so there's times when I've come home from vacations and camping and then went back in order not to miss any meetings. I've attended, I've only missed one meeting in three years of any of my committee meetings or board meetings. I feel it's a priority. I also feel it's a priority to get out in the schools. Graduation's the greatest day ever to go to, to watch those kids go across the stage. I never missed a Turner graduation, and I haven't missed a Milton graduation while I've been on the board. Just any of the little things, like going and seeing the play and going, when I volunteered for the snack shop, doing the drinks for five hours for the show choir, it was awesome. I mean, I had never experienced the show choir side of things. So the more things you can get involved in, like I said, even if it's taking from your family time, that's it.
All right, Tony.
Yes, I'd definitely be willing to do that. I'm lucky enough to have an employer who strongly encourages community involvement, so that works out wonderfully for me. But the, I think the harder choice that I'm also willing to do is to give up the family time. As my kids age a little bit more, hopefully, it won't be as much giving up family time as having them included in it as well, so.
Did you just see your boss walk in?
Gabe.
Well, I would say the first thing to success in any career or any job is showing up. So yes, I'd be more than well happy to be flexible, to be able to show up for the actual job. And since I'm young, and I'm not married, and I have no children, I don't have to rely on the family time so far.
Harvey.
Yes, being retired, my only boss is my wife, so I have definitely a lot amounts of time to give. And I think this also helps on the fact that for issues that need a lot of research, a lot of thought-provoking study, that being retired, it gives me an option to do that, so.
Donovan McKenna.
Well, running for the school board and becoming a member wasn't just a me decision, it was a family decision. And as being a business owner, I owe it to my employees to actually have an opinion in what I'm doing. It affects them. But I've built a strong team, both at home with my family and at work with our employees, and they both support everything I'm doing. And being the owner, I kind of have the flexibility of making sure I'm where I need to be. So that is definitely not an issue here.
And finally, Joe Martin.
Yeah, certainly willing to, and have done so over the years with the kids through the school district and participated in lots of those things. So the time is available, and as far as am I able to, I need just to check with the man in the mirror, and that's the only approval I need to go do it.
All right. Brent, you're going to answer this first. Ironically, Shelley's already answered this question. How important is that a board member engage in the schools, for example, attend events like graduation games, show choir, et cetera? Brent?
I think it's very important actually to attend a lot of the activities in the school. That way, you understand what's going on in our school, not just the co-activities that are going on, the choirs, the graduations, and stuff like that, but also some of the club activities. Like I said, the Harry Potter one, I want to get involved in that. My son's a huge Harry Potter fan, so I want to get involved in something like that. I want to help out with that. I also want to help out with their teachers, you know? With their teachers, understanding what they want, what they need help with, with activities in the school. And like I said, I- school. And like I said, I very seldom say no to helping out in any part of this community whatsoever.
So, Shelley, are you in favor of attending events like graduation games, show choir?
Yes, if you ask my family, they'll say, "I'm rarely home," and most of the people see me at one, either one school or the other, every single night of the week. So, how are you going to get to know the people if you're not out there doing it? I remember my very first day my daughter was at Harmony, the first person that greeted me was Wilson Niang, and said, "Hello, I'm your school board member." And I'm like, "Wow, I've never seen a school board member out at a school before," and introducing themselves. I immediately put a name with a face in the school board. And I found out later that each board member adopts one of the schools for the year, but I think you can't just be at that school, you have to be all over the place. You have to be, you know, I attended two of the, two or three of the open houses this year, and just seeing parents come in, and I saw grandparents come in, I hadn't known, we're in our, even our district. So, being able to see the people, talk to the people, they recognize you connected with the school, and something different than a teacher or administrator, that they can see the board's caring enough to get out and see what's going on in the schools. So, I'm at things all the time, so.
Tony?
I got to agree as well. I think it's very important for board members to be involved and be at the schools and activities, not from a micromanagement standpoint, but just from seeing community members out and about and letting them know that you care and you're involved.
Gabe?
I would have to agree as well. Getting out and about in the community is important for anybody who is elected official, because you're going to be able to hear the concerns, the positive effects that you are, or as the board is having on the actual community. As well as, my dad used to say, "I don't always show up to your games or your soccer games, because I'm always there for sport," which I am, but he goes, "I enjoy getting up on the Saturday mornings at 8:00 AM and just sitting there and drinking coffee, watching you play your sports." So, that'll give me the opportunity to enjoy the beautiful nature that God has created.
Harvey?
Yes, I too agree that. I think it's important to get out and about, and maybe one of the most important reasons for that is not just getting to know the people that you're representing, but I personally like musical theater, and so when I go to the high school and see, well, the last musical piece they did was Hello Dolly, it was just incredible. And to realize what our students are able to do, whether it's musical theater, sports, the different clubs they belong to, these people are amazing. So, it's, I think it's important to get out just to see what our students are accomplishing.
Diamond?
I don't think anyone's going to disagree that it's important to be out in the schools. You're the face of the community, and if you're not there, why wouldn't anyone else be? So, I think you should be the leader in going and being involved in every aspect. And as a board member, you should be encouraging people, we all work somewhere, and encouraging other people that maybe didn't think about going to the show choir, or seeing the play, that they should also come along with you and be able to welcome more people into that circle. As a new mom and only having a two-and-a-half-year-old, I don't have a son that plays basketball, but I went to the basketball tournament, and as a community stakeholder, I enjoy sponsoring events for the school that encourages people that work for us to be there. So, I definitely think that you need to have your face out in the community and in all the school district activities as much as you possibly can.
Joe Martin?
Yes. I shared with my fellow board candidates here early on, my prior experience told me one of the challenges here is when you go last on one of these questions, particularly when there's unanimity here, you can't say anything very different. I agree with everything everyone else has said, it's incredibly important, and quite frankly, could probably be one of the most enjoyable parts of the job.
All right, Brian?
Yeah, I guess I'll keep it brief, too. Yeah, I do agree that it's very important for two reasons. One, it's nice, relaxing, and very enjoyable to do so, but the other thing, being a process improvement expert, one thing you learn real quick is, what's on paper is, you know, theory, but when you actually go see it, that's where reality is, and sometimes reality doesn't match up with theory, so it's very important to see, you know, see for your own eyes how things are going.
All right, Shelley Kroll-Henke, this question will start with you. "Are you in favor of a homeschooled student being allowed to participate in sports, band, and other extracurricular activities? Why or why not?"
That's an interesting question. We've had several students in my district come in for sports and athletic events. I think it's mandated that they're allowed to if they're resident students. The issue is, that we have talked about, at least in my professional life, I don't know if we've had this discussion here since I've been in Milton for the three years, but was how the coaches and the WIA monitors their grades and their academics and their attendance, and the same rules that the other athletes are being held up to at that level to meet the requirements for the athletic code and different things like that. So, that's the only concern that we've discussed and talked about. As long as there's policies in place and that they're meeting the same standards as the other students and their resident student, they need to be there and participating in those things.
So, Tony, what are your thoughts about homeschooled students being allowed to participate in sports, band, and other extracurriculars?
I think that that would be, if it's allowable and acceptable within the regulations that apply, would be just fine, as long as it's not taking away spots from district students that are actually enrolled in the district.
I agree. They should be allowed to participate in sports or extracurricular activities. I also agree, I also feel that it gives them the opportunity to grow a social network, as well as learn more, because obviously, their academic setting is going to be completely different than a student in the public school academic setting, so it allows them to learn more of what is going on truly in the real world, and to be able to bring that back home and talk to their parents and want to learn about that specific area, or ask more questions in order to grow in their own academics.
Harvey?
I am not real sure how I would feel about that. I think it comes down to whether it's allowable under the statute or not. If it's allowable, I think you have to make accommodations for them, but I would also agree with Tony on the fact that if they were taking a spot that somebody who is attending the district schools on a regular basis, then I don't think that that would be fair. So, that would be basically my opinion.
Diamond?
You have to agree with policy, and policies are always put in place, and I agree that students have to meet standards, just as if they were within the district. I also think it's important to realize that students are sometimes homeschooled for a variety of reasons, and that's not always benedict to all of us of what those reasons may be. And I think it's a good learning experience, even for our own students that are within the district, to have that interaction with someone that lives a different lifestyle and has a different educational background. And we're a community, and for whatever means of that person, to not be within the district education, they're still part of our community. And we talk about schooling and education being the center of our community, and we need to keep that in mind for all students. And if it meets the requirements of the district and they want to participate in that sport, they're building those interpersonal skills that are important to go on to later on in the future. So, as long as it follows policy, and I think both sides can benefit, I think it's a good idea.
Joe, how do you feel about homeschooled students being involved in extracurriculars?
I would share the viewpoint of most of the folks up here. I think it's, I think it's good, it's allowable. Growth and development of a student happens in a lot of areas. These other activities, if you will, outside of their academic training, can give them a chance to grow and develop, and we've all talked about how important the community and school link is, and if those students and/or families are part of our community, we can improve our community as a whole by allowing those students to gain the advantage that some of the other folks have mentioned. So, as long as we're cognizant of the couple little limitations that it has, like the folks have mentioned here, yeah, I think it's a, it's a good idea.
Brian?
I agree with everybody. I do think, with this caveat that that student is living in the district, then absolutely. And I'll just add on that I also think that it's their right to, because as a resident of the district, the parents are paying property taxes, so they, in my opinion, I think they have a right to attend those extracurriculars.
And Brent?
Yeah, Joe, this is not very good, the last one. I agree with everyone that's talked up here about this issue here. The big thing is, yes, they do have the right to join other activities in our school district. If it's sports, if it's choir, anything like that, they have the right to be involved with it. And what, really, we've got to take a look at, is the school going to help them grow? Are they going to become a student with, that's going to be learning other activities, skills, getting along with other students, skills of learning something different from maybe a coach or a teacher or something like that? So, yes, they have the right to be here, they should be here. Now, the issue you run into, you know, you only have spots for 25 kids on a team, or 25 people in a club, we'd have to come up with something like that, and they would have to follow the same rules that we have for students that are in our system already, for cutting, whatever it's going to be, for saying, "No, you're going to be on a JV team," or whatever.
All right. We've got a couple of questions left, and then kind of a doozy for you, which will be, I'm saving that for last. And obviously, somebody in the audience is very up to date on state policy and has a couple of questions, and we might just try to keep those to short answer, so we don't get too deep. But, right now, do you have any, and this would be for Tony, "Do you have any business interests with the school district, and do you see that as a conflict of interest?" Now, typically, from a crowd, somebody knows something from somebody and kind of wants an answer for one individual. I don't know which one of you it is. So, Tony, conflict of interest, any business interests? And if you did have a business interest, it's not even you.
It's an interesting question. Sorry, I was just trying to think through the process.
And even if you don't have a business interest, would this be a conflict of interest?
I think that any time that there's a potential conflict of interest, it's very important for the board member to go ahead and not take part and not participate in that particular function. And I've seen that done on many different boards and many different times. There's, and if I was ever in a position where I had a potential conflict of interest, I would not be involved in the discussion or vote in that, on that.
All right, Gabe?
Well, since my job title is a public servant, and I work technically for all of you right now at my current employment, then I definitely do not have a business interest. And as Tony said, I would agree, if for some reason I had a conflict of interest, I am an Eagle Scout, so I'm going to be honest, and I would definitely step down in that conflict of interest, for sure.
Harvey, do you have any business interests, or would they be a conflict?
I think established that I'm retired, so I have no conflict of interest. I think it would be important in two sense, two different ways. One, is I think the person, if they were running for a position and had a conflict of interest, I think they should make the public aware of that before the election. And number two, if elected to the board and they had a conflict of interest, I agree with the, from the standpoint that they should recuse themselves from particular votes or portions of business for the board that might be affected by their conflict of interest.
Diamond, your thoughts?
I do have a local business coming into the community, and we work with the school in terms of co-op opportunities, or we're working with the Career and Technical Education Department on how to influence education moving forward, so make sure our kids are above the technology curve. Currently, we have no business interests with the district, but if, in the case that I'm on the board and for some reason that would come up in the future, I would definitely recuse myself from that involvement.
Joe?
I can't imagine one unless you've been talking to my cows.
I have talked to cows, a lot of cows, that's why I went to college. Brian?
Yeah, so I do not have any business interests with the district, and I, you know, I'll just say that I really think that it's critical in order to maintain trust with the community, that even if you don't have a conflict of interest, if there's an appearance of a conflict of interest, that you need to recuse yourself in, on those type of matters.
No, I do not have one. Again, I'm going to pretty much state the same thing that's already gone through here. If there is one, I think the board member needs to step back and let everybody know, "Hey, I cannot be part of this because of this issue," or something like that. The only thing I can think of is if I was on the board and we were talking about the Hawk Zone, if what we're going to do down the future with the Hawk Zone, I would have to step back, because I'm in the Hawk Zone probably four nights a week with my kids, so.
And Shelley?
No, I do not personally have any business interest with the district. However, when we had a summary of bids for, I don't know, something for West with the parking, or parking lot or something, one of the bidders, I had no idea, was my brother's and dad's business out of Evansville, and I didn't even know they bid projects like that, because I don't have any connection with that business. But, if that would occur again, I would make sure that I, we didn't vote on it that night, it was already bid it out to the lowest bidder. But, I would definitely excuse myself from the discussion or the vote if that had happened again.
All right, we're going to go back to two minutes for this question. Gabe, you get to have it first, and I'm really sorry. There's a lot of ways to answer this, but what are your thoughts on a new school?
Well, that's the big talk of the town. I would say that I am not for the school, and I am not against the school. I am within, working within our means, within the district. I want to make sure that the first step that the school board is doing is making sure that the education and the safety of the staff, as well as the students, is priority number one. My second would be, then we can go about if we need a new school, if we have the funds for it, if people are willing to donate into the actual community, create fundraisers, anything like that, or to be able to go about it and think about it more economically efficiently.
Harvey, again, we're going to let you have two minutes if you want. What are your thoughts on a new school?
You know, it's kind of convoluted, because I started attending the school board meetings pretty much from the time of the first survey, and through the whole process that resulted in the two referendums, attended as many fact committee meetings as I could as well. And through that whole process, I think there was a lot of confusion about what the figures actually are. We saw sets of figures that indicated that the school was going to continue to grow, it's going to continue to be overcrowded. We saw other sets of figures that said that this was a temporary bump, and that it was going to flatten out or even decrease at some point in time. So, there was no consensus as to really what were going to be the needs of the district 10 years, 15, 20 years down the line. So, I think one of the important things we need to do is to actually get a group of figures and facts that we can all agree on, and go from that point. And again, whether or not a new school is the right way to solve the problems, or whether it isn't, it really comes back to what the community wants. And it goes back to what I said before about listening. I may walk onto a new car lot and want a new sports car, but my wife says, "No, we don't need a new sports car." And I might get all excited about thinking of all the things that might entail if I got that sports car. But, we have to start listening to the people that make up this community, and whether we want a new school or we don't want a new school, if they don't want it, we're not going to get it.
Diamond, your thoughts on a new school?
I think we do have to realize that the community is not, hasn't been behind the last two solutions, and we need to look at why, and I think we, a lot of us have addressed that tonight. And in regards to a new school, I think that we're put here as board members, and even as a community, you know, earlier we talked about wants list and needs list, and it's a balance between what the community may want, but we also have to realize what our staff and what our kids need. And we've had, as a community, this understanding for the last almost seven or eight years, starting with the, you know, the strategic planning meeting, and addressed that there's lots of needs that aren't being met by our students and our teachers. And that's incredibly important. And a lot of the frustration is that people don't feel like they understand what the facts are, and I think we need to start from the beginning with that, and get everyone back to the solution of, we're doing whatever solution it is, whether it's a new school, or an expansion, or a revamp, but it's for our kids. And it's not about not being heard at that point, it's about what we need to do to ensure our students have all of the resources that they need to be successful when they leave this district, and then come back and impact our community. And that, you know, our school relies on economic development, and economic development relies on our school. We are growing, there is more subdivisions coming to Milton, and we have to be prepared for that, and we have to address our current concerns along with these upcoming concerns.
All right, Joe, new school?
Well, I think I tipped my hand in my opening argument here, or opening statement, not argument. And this is what you all came for, obviously. not argument, um, uh, and this is what you all came for, obviously. You're putting us on the spot, we gotta pick a side, et cetera. Um, so succinctly, uh, like I said, two committees of different people that digested all of the information came to the same conclusion. So, I mean, you gotta, you gotta pick a stance here and you gotta wear it. Um, I am convinced that the best, cheapest 30-year solution for this district is a nine to 12 building. And all of that brings with it, it, it's, it's the most economical way to solve all of the issues we've got.
Brian, do you have an opinion on this one?
Oh, gosh. Um, I, so I think, what I, I think what we have to realize in listening to the community is that what has been put out and has been stated as needs, um, you know, that fits the definition of a need for some people but not others. And so really, I think what we need to do as, uh, as a board, but, but also as a community is, okay, let's list all the things that, um, you know, all the consultants said were needs and prioritize and find out whether or not that really is need in a subjective manner, or excuse me, an objective manner, not subjective. Um, and that's very, it's, there's many ways you can do it, there's many best practices on how to do that. Um, I will tell you that when, when I was asked, uh, on the board for a dollar figure of what we think the taxpayer should, should, um, um, what we, we should, we think that we should spend on facilities, um, I went out and did an analysis as to how much the pa, the passage of other referendums, capital referendums in, um, other districts, how much, um, did the taxpayer have to pay or how much they could stomach and what is fair, um, in, in, you know, did the comparisons between the referendum amount and the property value amount. Uh, and what a lot of people don't understand is that, uh, our community is one of the, um, one of the poorer districts in, in the commu, in, in the state of Wisconsin, we're in the bottom third, um, when you compare the number of students compare, and you compare it to the equalized property value. And, and to me, you know, if we can build a school for $40 million, I want a new school. But I also think that it's irresponsible to go over the figure of 40 million because I think we're asking our, our, our citizens to pay more than their fair share.
All right, Brendan, your thoughts on a new school?
Well, I'm gonna be upright, upfront with you. I'm for a new school system that we need to figure out what we need to do with the high school, what we need to do with the middle school, what we need to do with our grade schools. If that is to build a new school, we need to build a new school. I'm thinking right now, just looking at our schools, going to our schools, going to the activities, I don't know how many people have been in, into the pool area lately. Uh, my daughter's on the Milton Marlins. You wanna talk about a mess, a disgusting mess, when you get parents from other school districts talking about our facilities? Like I said, I get to travel throughout the state here and see other high schools being built and just kinda drop and go, you gotta be kidding me. Everybody talks about field houses, you know, what is a [BLEEP] field house? A field house is soccer course inside, a hockey rink inside, that's field, everybody's talking about field houses. We need a new high school. Now again, what is the number for that? What can we afford? That's gonna be the big thing. Our biggest issue right now is that our schools are failing our kids. We have school classrooms that are 700 square foot with 30 kids in it. Try to put 30 kids in a 700 foot, or 700 square foot room and try to do some teaching with them. Today's learners, the 21st century learners, they learn in a classroom setting, but also in a group setting. There's no possible way that we can do group settings on any one of our schools right now. Other than a couple of classrooms at the high school, you might get away with that. Right now, we don't have that. We don't have that, the technology in those rooms. Um, and that, and that's the issue we see, that I see right now. We are gonna get families starting to leave the school district. We're gonna get families not come to our school district because they're gonna take a look at our schools and see what they are, what they really are. I tell anyone right now, if you got the chance, go to one of our schools during, during the school, during the classroom, go in the classroom.
Shelley, you're nodding your head.
I'm agreeing with things you're saying. Okay, so like I said, the past years have not been easy for the board. Decisions that we made of a board have not always been popular, but they feel at the time they were and still are the decisions and were the correct decisions to move the district and the community forward and place what's right for our students first, putting our students first. All the space needs, the instructional needs, and the residential increases will lead us to that same direction, whether it's now, two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years from now, it's gonna be the same thing that we're gonna need. Adding on to our high school does not address our K, our K-12 space needs, it's only gonna address the high school. We're still gonna have overcrowding in the middle school, the elementary schools, we're not gonna have the learning spaces. We're gonna have the same issues if we just add on to one building. No one wants our taxes to go up. I don't want my taxes to go up. My husband said, really, you want our taxes to go up? I said, yes, absolutely for education, for putting students first. I want something that's gonna be a long-lasting solution. I want it to last for 30, 40, 50 years. I don't want it to be a temporary solution that we're gonna outgrow in the next two or three years and have to come with another referendum. I remember, uh, this, the, when we had the council, we were presenting the council, they said, can you guarantee we're not gonna need another referendum? No school can guarantee that. That's why you've seen schools in Sun Prairie with multiple referendums, Oregon with multiple referendums. Um, so there have no, no detailed plans that have been shared to show what $40 million can get us, so that's not a solution we can look at until we actually see plans for a $40 or $50 million solution. We can throw that number out there, but until we can see some details on it, it's kind of a useless number.
Should be an easy answer for you, Tony.
Piece cake, all right. Um, I guess I can start by saying as I, I supported the first two referendums, I thought that they were reasonable solutions and I also heard each time the community speak and say that that was not the solution at that time. Um, I think based on the time and effort and studies that was, been done by the board and by the school district employees and by, by the, uh, companies that they outsourced with, I think that the, the new school is most likely the, the best solution and being a new high school, being the best solution, because it gives the ability to go ahead and, and affect all the grade levels, like we've stated, it goes ahead and can help in the, the, the class sizes all the way down. Obviously, those first two weren't what the people wanted. So I think that's gonna be the tough decisions that the, the next board's gonna have to kinda go through and figure out how can they accomplish these, these things on, at, at a number that is going to be acceptable to the community.
All right, finally, closing arguments and Gabe, your, uh, reward for having answered that question first is you get to go last, get the final word, so. Harvey, two-minute closing statement.
All right, again, I'd like to thank you for, for hosting this and having us here. Um, I guess I would, I would go back to kind of what, uh, a lot of, has come up during a lot of the talk here. There seems to be a fair amount of consensus that there needs to be new faces, new ideas on the board. Uh, and one of the problems we've had in the past is, is we get more members who are dedicated and who serve for decades sometimes on the board. And that's good, except for the fact that it also creates a situation where you're not getting an inflow of new ideas and creativity to the board. So I'm running, I'm hoping to be elected, uh, because another one of the things we identified up here is that the current board hasn't listened, or at least citizens have felt that it hasn't listened to, to their concerns. So if I'm elected, I will listen. I will represent you, I'll be your voice. Um, my past experience as a postmaster and also in the, in the, as a, uh, employee of a remodeling company, uh, I had to have the skills to colla, collaborate, collaborate with other people. Um, part of that is involved in listening, sometimes it's involved in educating, and a lot of times it's involved in, in, uh, in convincing people. And these are the skills that are needed and as I said, we, we need new perspective, we need new ideas, uh, and it's time to put some new members onto the board. I hope I'm one of them, thank you.
Diamond McKenna?
Um, I'd like to begin as well by saying thank you for putting this on tonight and thank you for all of you sitting here. It's been kind of a little longer than probably years in the past. Um, I'd like to begin by asking the audience and even my fellow candidates here a question. By a show of hands, how many of you care about the future of our kids in the district? Probably everyone's hand should be up. And at the core of it, that's really why I'm here today and that's why I made the decision to run for the school board. My frustration with the torn community and our district's kind of standstill on our future led me to making a decision on one of two ways. I can sit at home and I can complain about where we're at today, or I can kinda lace up my boots, hit the ground running and, and give it a, a fighting chance. I'm positive that I, my unique ability of being a fresh, fresh perspective and a business owner can really be the change that the school board might need to get the district within the community support. Um, I have invested into our community, I've only been here for a short time, but my family is here, my, my business is coming here, it's very personal to me. I'm gonna be dropping off my two-year-old son, as he'll tell you, he's two and a half, um, at school before I know it. And that's eye-opening to me, I wanna be part of that positive change. My goal is to make sure we have the resources needed to best educate Milton's future. Um, the way I think we can do that is by unifying our efforts to move forward as a cohesive and informed group of leadership and to do what's best for our, our students, our community members, our, our staff. My experience as a mom and as a business owner and as a problem solver, I think will truly serve our district well. And I appreciate you listening and being here tonight and I hope that I can gain your vote on February 20th, so thank you very much.
Two minutes, Joe.
Well, once again, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for coming. Uh, we certainly enjoy, uh, the, uh, the input and the chance to, uh, defend what we think are, are the, uh, some of the issues. Um, as I've, uh, engaged with people through the process of, of becoming and being a candidate, if you will, um, I, I try to remind people a couple things, you know? The first comment from someone engaging me is, what do you think about the school? I've shared that, um, but then what I wanted to say back to those folks is, I want you to remember two things. Um, this is not a one-issue job, everyone up here I think acknowledges that, there's lots and lots of, of good work and, and hard work that the school board has to do that has nothing to do with building a new school. Secondarily, folks, I want everyone to remember that the glass is half-full here in Milton. Um, I have several, uh, college classmates, et cetera, that serve on school boards around the state and we invariably talk about, you know, what's going on in your community, what's going on in yours? And, uh, you know, like I said, the glass is half-full. We have innumerable things here in the district that are on the right plane, we're doing great things for, et cetera. I would certainly welcome the opportunity to be a part of a board that can, uh, then deliver that policy, deliver those, those academic opportunities, and I think I can be an effective voice for the people to find the solution forward.
Brian?
Uh, I'd like to thank the, uh, Mac and everybody that came, uh, and everybody that's watching. Thank you very much for, for the opportunity and, um, uh, I think what Harvey said is probably one of the most, um, eloquent, uh, closings I've ever heard, so, uh, thank you, I appreciate that and I do agree with him. Um, I, I think it is time for, uh, some new faces on the board. One thing that I, I've experienced within the short time that I've been on the board is there is really no, um, desire to, um, to collaborate and to, uh, compromise. Um, and, you know, until we get to a point where we can compromise and collaborate, um, I, I don't think, uh, we're gonna make a whole lot of, of movement. And we've already wasted two years because we didn't listen to the community and we didn't, and the board didn't, um, compromise and come up with a solution that works for everybody. The kids are the most important, uh, are most important, um, people in our lives, yes, absolutely. But at the same time, you can't bankrupt half of, of the city in order to, to give them everything. You can still get them what they need, have them become very successful and have a great education if we use critical thinking. And, um, I, like Joe said, this is in a one-solution type job. Um, there's many things that, um, as many people have been following me that, uh, I'm passionate about and I'm really looking to, uh, continue and work with, um, you know, the next board and come up with some, some positive solutions that works for everybody in the community.
All right, um, I've been waiting for this one, to be honest with you. Uh, I gotta sort through it here and it's really starting to get itchy. Um, first thing I just wanna say, thank you very much for coming, spending your time here, getting the information that you want from us, Nate, up here. Um, and hopefully we can answer some of your questions either after this or we answer some of your questions ready. But like I stated, stated right off the bat, the number one reason for a school board is our students. Our students are number one. No way fans of butts about it, okay? That's it, students number one. What they need is what they should have. Again, everybody talks about wants and needs, what do we want, what do we need? We already hear this from our teachers, what they need, okay? Our teachers feed into our students. We want our students to expand, we want them to grow. Our teachers are the big issues, are the big thing that we have right now. It's telling us right off the bat, this issue with our staffing, this issue with our classroom, whatever it's gonna be there, they're gonna make the, the student. Um, with that is the facilities, okay? We all know there's, there's issues with our facilities, we gotta do something with our facilities. Uh, remodel, whatever it's gonna be, but we need our facilities. The other thing is what I look at is helping the students is our community. We gotta get our community back together again. We don't have that right now. You have people here, you have people here, they cannot communicate together cause they're passionate about their decision, what needs to be done, okay? But we need to get our community back in there and feed the community back into our students. So our students understand that our community is behind them, it's not split. Cause if you go up to the juniors or seniors in this high school, they'll tell you that the community is split. They're, they're kinda quiet about, they don't wanna ruffles any feathers right now on that, but they'll tell you, if you talk to them, they'll tell you that the community is the issue right now.
Shelley, you've been waiting for this?
Sure. Uh, again, thank you for holding this forum tonight so we can all give our opinions and people can see what we're about. Um, I just wanna say that I'm involved in all aspects of education, between my job at Boy Turner, my role as a Milton School Board member and as a parent of two children who have attended the Milton School District, I'm experienced in making tough decisions. We've had to make tough decisions the last three years, supporting public education, supporting what resources our students and staff need in order to be successful in the classroom. And following through with the concerns that are brought to my attention. I experience a frustration every one of us feels every day between parents, students, administration, staff. I live that every day and as a public servant, I'm there to also, um, help the public deal with the frustration within the school district. I do not have an agenda when it comes to being on the school board, representing our students, staff and families. My son's already graduated, my daughter will graduate in 2019. I come with an open mind, so the decisions we make as a board are gonna be for our future kids. It's not for my kids, it's not for a special interest I have, it's for the kids of the future and that's my goal. It's all about what's right for students. I do collaborate and talk with parents when I'm at events, I talk with staff members. Um, they're, they feel free to talk to me about their class sizes and we discuss that with Tim. The minute I have a concern, it goes right back to the superintendent and it's good, it gets dealt with or talked with or he finds out how he can solve that problem. I heard a staff member come in and say, he did it because it was the right thing and he said that to me one time. I do it because it's the right thing, that's why we do, we're on the board. We do it because we wanna do what's right for our kids. Uh, I disagree with Brian, I feel like we do collaborate, we collaborate all the time. I have our special ed department talking with the teachers and hearing how they're collaborating with their families and how they're excited with these new, um, things that they're bringing and new techniques they brought in. Technology is collaborating with the parents and with the students and everybody in the community. Um, I feel like we're collaborating all the time, that's the only way we're gonna exist is if we collaborate. So please vote for me on February 20th and a reminder you can vote early or absentee vote.
Tony, yes.
Okay, um, I guess I just wanted to start off by saying thank you again, as, as everybody else, I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you to the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce and thank you to the City of Milton on the use of the facilities. Uh, and I kinda goes back to, uh, when, when I chose to go ahead and run, I really felt like it was the right thing to do because I felt it was necessary to give the community some choices. And obviously, the community has choices, so this is good. So nothing bad can come out of having choices. Uh, I feel that I would do a good job, uh, representing this, uh, the parents and this, the students of, of the school district. Uh, I think that if the opportunity is given to me to be on this board, that I will be a person that, that'll have an opening a person that that will have an open ear, be willing to listen to others' ideas, be willing to search out those ideas, and and be willing to present them and work with the board, with the rest of the board, to go ahead and work towards a solution that's going to be the best solution for our community.
And guess who gets the last word?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I want to thank the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce for holding this forum. I feel with my education background, both going through Milton schools, most recently in graduating with my degrees in political science and public administration, I can serve very well on the board and understand how the board is supposed to function as a, in administration, as well as to serve the actual community. I also have relationships since I graduated from Milton, both with the the teachers and the administrators, most recently, and know what it is like firsthand to deal with the facilities and the academic needs. I will also work extremely hard for you, since I don't have a family currently right now, but I also do believe it is time for the next generation to start stepping up and realize that we need new, fresh faces and new, fresh ideas to come to the board and to the community.
All right, there were a couple of other questions that were asked, and we weren't quite sure how to phrase them regarding state policy, so we want to apologize. Hopefully, everybody pretty much had their questions answered tonight. Lucky to have eight qualified candidates, we're so glad that you could come out and join us tonight. You guys are great, and considering how low the voter turnout is in a primary, you guys will probably make the decision for the community. So thank you for that. And thanks to the chamber.
Drive safe.
Oh, is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.